Good, everyone. It's 5:30. I don't understand if I ever came to the flag. You call our city commissioning order. Can bow his please. Come and follow me. Thank you for this day that you've made. We're rejoicing. We're glad in it. We're grateful to live in such a great and wonderful city such as Leesburg, Florida. We thank you for our city staff, our city manager, our city council. We thank you, God, for allowing us to work together to cohesively, God, to sometimes disagree, but, God, most important, to do your will. We pray now that decision we make, God, be beneficial to our city, our residents, adults who visit us. We pray for every business owner. We pray, God, that you, God, send prosperity to them. We pray for the employees to work to make these businesses what they are. We pray for our troops around the world that fight for our freedom that we so all enjoy. Our first response will keep us safe here locally in our local city. We actually pray for their families, God. We actually pray for our children. They can grow, be productive, and this city can be all that it needs to be for all of our families. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
First, we have a proclamation for Professional Bill Buyers Day and Procurement Month. Officer of the Mayor of Leesburg, Florida proclamation. Whereas the public procurement profession plays a significant role in the efficiency and effectiveness of both government and business, and whereas, in addition to the purchase of goods and services, procurement adds values to organization by performing functions such as executing, implementing, and administering contracts, developing strategic procurement strategies, and cultivating working relationship with suppliers and other departments within the organization. Whereas public procurement professionals at the city of Leesburg and other public and private organizations have tremendous influence on the economic conditions of the United States with a cumulative purchasing power running into the billions of dollars. And whereas the procurement division of the city of Leesburg is committed to providing high caliber strategic logistical and operational support of all departments within the city. And whereas the procurement division of the city of Leesburg recognizes, supports, and practices the public procurement values and guiding principles of accountability, ethics, impartiality, professionalism, service, and transparency established by the National Institute for Public Procurement as fundamental tenets of the public procurement profession. And whereas NIGP has proclaimed the month of March as procurement month to further expand the awareness of the procurement professional's role to governmental officials, the general public, business, and corporate leaders. Now therefore, our John Christian Mayor of the city of Leesburg, Florida, do hereby proclaim March 9, 2019, as Professionals' Buyers' Day and the month of March 2019 as procurement month in the city of Leesburg, and urge all citizens to recognize the role of the purchasing and material management profession within the business industry and government. Mike here to accept this? Oh, you got the shirt in town. Mike, you gonna say anything?
No.
Yes, sir.
I just say, I think we all got the notice, but I believe we're the first, is it in the state of Florida or the United States, to use this electronic procurement process?
First in the United States.
Yeah, which is a big deal. You can do all the procurement stuff online if you're a vendor, and it's gonna make it really efficient, and I think get a lot more bidders, too.
And I actually just met with the Lake County new purchasing director, and I guess he attended the road map contractor meeting. I guess the big thing he got hit upon is when they were gonna start accepting bids electronically.
Well, good.
Well, Mike, since you're here, can you give us your name and just tell us a little about your departments?
Mike Thornton, Purchasing Manager. We have a department of three in purchasing, and then we also manage the central warehouse, which has three other people that has an inventory of about $5 million with electric inventory and the other utilities. So we manage that as well as do all the purchasing for the city or through delegated authority to allow the departments to do the purchasing.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate all you do, Mike. Consent agenda. Routine items are placed on the consent agenda to expedite the meeting. If the commission staff wish to discuss any item, the procedures is followed. Pull the items from the consent agenda, vote on remaining items with one roll call vote, and discuss each pulled item and vote by roll call. Are there any items tonight the commission wants to pull?
Yes, 4B, 1, and 3, please.
4B, 1?
1 and 3.
And 3? And we need to pull item B2 from the agenda tonight. Any other items? Motion to approve the remaining items, please.
Motion to approve the remaining items?
Second.
And discussion from the commission in public? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Peterson?
Yes.
Commissioner Robach?
Yes.
Commissioner Hurley?
Yes.
Commissioner Dennison?
Yes.
Mayor Christian?
Yes. Item 4B1 is a purchase request. So would like to make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion, please.
Yeah, I pulled this one and 3. Same question on both of them. Do we have to work a little bit harder with our budget before we submit it every year? Because this is the second or third time that we have to move monies around because we gave a shortfall to what we thought we were gonna spend. And right now, we're in pretty good shape financially, but eventually, if we go through another recession, we're not gonna have the luxury of moving the money around like this.
Do you wanna address that?
I can talk to 4B1. That was not a programmed or planned expenditure. The vehicle was totaled. We had a driver. We were the second vehicle in a line of three vehicles. A driver crossed the yellow line and hit, actually, all three of those vehicles and totaled the vehicle. So this wasn't a budgeted activity. We had to replace the vehicle that was totaled.
Do you have an emergency fund for something like that? I know we're self-insured, but it was anything recaptured?
We do get insurance. There was an insurance payment, and the value of the vehicle doesn't cover the entire replacement cost, but yes, we did that. We also pulled everything off the old vehicle that we could. There's a crane on that vehicle that we took off to save money.
I saw that, right. Right. And what was, what happened to the employee?
Well, he was not at fault.
No, no, I mean, as far as injuries?
He was, he went to the hospital. They checked him out, and he was released for duty the next day.
Good, okay. Thank you.
And a commission comment? Comments from the public?
I would, though, just add, you know, DC kinda answered that question from kind of the micro level. For, I think, from a higher level, I think one of the things that we do need to be concerned about with the fleet fund is where that balance is going and what we do to purchase. I think we do an extremely good job on prioritizing what equipment we should and shouldn't purchase on an annual basis through the checklist. But I think the two things that we do need to start looking at is, one, being more aggressive about letting older equipment go away, and, two, where we've been very aggressive in trying to keep those lease payments down. Remember, we've done that 50% of the total lease payments, and we've been sitting at 75% of the total lease payments, and we were scheduled to go back to 100% this fiscal year when we opted to stay at 75. So I do see a little bit of a shortfall that is starting in that fund, and I think where it's gonna hit us the most is the general fund. So we're trying to stave off that 100% increase. Off the top of my head, it's not budget time right now, but I'm gonna say the general fund impact of that increase is probably around $250,000. I'm looking at Brandy to make sure I'm in the ballpark, a little bit less. The utility funds, I think, can handle where we're headed with the fleets. So I think one of the things that we'll do as we get into fiscal year 20 is take a look at that policy, take a look at whether we wanna continue to do these lease payments or not, or just outright purchase things through the lease fund, look at our size of our fleet. And so I think fiscal year 20 is gonna be a big year for us on how we purchase equipment. So we're looking at it.
Excellent. Thank you.
And a comments for the commission? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Robach?
Yes.
Commissioner Hurley?
Yes.
Commissioner Dennison?
Yes.
Commissioner Peterson?
Yes.
Mayor Christian?
Yes. Item 4B3, correction for incorrect dollar amount.
Yeah, I'll move for approval.
Second.
Discussion, Mayor.
Yeah, the same, the same question, you know. Once again, we were under what it should have been, so I don't wanna see that become a trend.
Yeah, and the bucket trucks are something we need to take a look at, too, because between the bucket trucks and the dirt trucks, they're the biggest fleet expenditures in the electric department.
Right, okay. That's all I had, Mayor.
Okay. Any other discussion from the public? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hurley?
Yes.
Commissioner Dennison?
Yes.
Commissioner Peterson?
Yes.
Commissioner Robach?
Yes.
Mayor Christian?
Yes. Item 5B is a public hearing. Is it a resolution? Would someone like to introduce it?
I'll introduce.
Resolution of the City Commission of the city of Leesburg, Florida, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a professional services agreement for engineering services related to the electric utility on a continuing basis with Power Engineers, Inc., and providing an effective date.
Move for approval.
Second.
Moving properly second. Any discussion from the commission? From the public? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Dennison?
Yes.
Commissioner Peterson?
Yes.
Commissioner Robach?
Yes.
Commissioner Hurley?
Yes.
Mayor Christian?
Yes. Item 5B is a second reading.
I'll introduce and ask me read by title, please.
An ordinance of the city of Leesburg, Florida, annexing certain real property consisting of approximately 15 acres, being generally located on the north side of State Road 44 and east of Whitney Road, lying in Section 20 Township 19 South, Range 24 East, Lake County, Florida, provided that such said property so annex shall be liable for its proportionate share of the existing and future indebtedness of said city, providing that such annexed property shall be subject to all laws and ordinances of said city as if all such territory had been a part of the city of Leesburg at the time of passage and approval of said laws and ordinances, providing that such annexed territory shall be placed in City Commission District 3 and providing an effective date.
Move for approval.
Second.
Moving properly second. Any discussion from the commission? I just have one question. I think it's the applicant here, Dan.
Yes, sir.
My biggest question is on Beach Road coming up Jones. That road has been demolished by trucks that are coming on that back end. Residents are complaining about the entrance coming in, so I would like to know if someone's gonna fix that road, if the trucks continue to come through that road, or what's gonna happen.
Dan Miller, planning and zoning. We can work with the applicant and make sure that a repair is made to that issue, the buckets who have, who are the owners of the property, and he wanted to develop the property?
Is that Fay back there? Fay K. Carr, I'm gonna get you on the record, man, because we had a lot of complaints from the residents of that road being torn up.
I'd like to talk.
I wanna get you on the record, man.
Yeah, we've actually contacted...
Say your name for us, Fay.
Fay Pocat. The property, we are working on getting a county connection to Beach Road, since that's on a city street, it's a county road. Since we're wanting a commercial with entrance and size, entrance is a little bit more involved. Instead of just a general sketch of what we're trying to do, they actually want it engineered. Keith has been working with us on some additional engineering on that property, and one of the items we wanna get with him on is pay access to the north and not coming at that intersection. Yes, it is definitely an issue.
All right.
And I know we've talked to the resident that lives closest to there, and we've, I think, expressed, you know, our concern as well, that, you know, whenever we get everything situated, that we would make any corrections that needed to happen there for him.
Okay. Thanks, Mike.
Is this one of the roads that the county has said, no, it's not ours?
I don't know. When I went to get the driveway construction permit, they said it was theirs, so that's why I had to do additional. What I turned in to them was not acceptable. They said it had to be a actual engineer drawing for that connection. So that's the route I've gone is through the county so far.
Thanks, Fay.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Comments from the public? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Peterson?
Yes.
Commissioner Robach?
Yes.
Commissioner Hurley?
Yes.
Commissioner Dennison?
Yes.
Mayor Christian?
Yes. Item 5B is second reading as well.
5C.
5C.
5C. I'll introduce and read by title, please.
An ordinance of the city of Leesburg, Florida, amending the comprehensive plan by changing the future land use map designation of certain property containing 15 plus minus acres from Lake County urban medium density to city of Leesburg industrial for property generally located north of State Road 44 and east of Whitney Road as legally described in Section 20 Township 19 South, Range 24 East, Lake County, Florida, and providing an effective date.
Motion to approve?
Motion to approve. Second.
Moving properly second. Any discussion from the commission? From the public? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Robach?
Yes.
Commissioner Hurley?
Yes.
Commissioner Dennison?
Yes.
Commissioner Peterson?
Yes.
Mayor Christian?
Yes. Item 5D is a second reading as well.
I'll introduce and ask me read by title only, please.
An ordinance of the city of Leesburg, Florida, rezoning approximately 39.57 plus minus acres from Lake County A agriculture to PUD planned unit development to allow for industrial and commercial development for property generally located north of State Road 44 and east of Whitney Road as legally described in Sections 20 and 29 Township 19 South, Range 24 East, Lake County, Florida, and providing an effective date.
Move for approval.
Second.
Moving properly second. Any discussion from the commission? From the public? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hurley?
Yes.
Commissioner Dennison?
Yes.
Commissioner Peterson?
Yes.
Commissioner Robach?
Yes.
Mayor Christian?
Yes. Item 5E, second reading as well.
I'll introduce and ask me read by title only.
Thank you so much.
An ordinance of the city of Leesburg, Florida, annexing certain real property consisting of approximately 46.5 acres, being generally located north of US Highway 441, south of North Silver Lake Road, and southeast of County Road 44, in Section 1 Township 19 South, Range 25 East, Lake County, Florida, provided that said property so annex shall be liable for its proportionate share of the existing and future indebtedness of said city, providing that such annexed property shall be subject to all laws and ordinances of said city as if all such territory had been a part of the city of Leesburg at the time of passage and approval of said laws and ordinances, providing that such annexed territory shall be placed in City Commission District 1 and providing an effective date.
Motion to approve? Second.
Moving properly second. Any discussion from the commission? From the public? Yes, sir.
You've got three items concerning us. I'd like to speak to that. Should I speak now? Is there any help here?
Yes, sir. You can speak now.
My name is Walter Hartman. I spoke here at the first hearing that you had on this whole thing. We had a number of people here. The first thing I attended was a zoning and planning meeting, and I was under the impression that they didn't approve of this project as it is. And then we came to the, is that true?
Yes, sir.
I thought it was. And we had that first hearing. We had a number of people. I don't know if we have anybody else here besides myself representing Silver Lake. But I was a little disappointed from some of the comments I heard from one of these commissioners referencing us, concerned citizens, you know. As I was sitting here, I was saying, now, this is really precious. I was under the impression that this was open for, that the public can come and express our feelings and learn about these projects as you guys are considering. And me personally, I felt very put out by these particular comments. We are concerned about our homes. You're talking about putting 256 apartments on these 40-some acres, and we already have Arbers, which is 112 units, Blueberry Hills, another 68. And at the time, you know, we came out and forced Silver Lake to, the association on the Arbers got approved, and I couldn't tell you who it was, but somebody in the city of Leesburg had promised us, Silver Lake proper, that the transition from the Arbers to our homes on Silver Lake was gonna be something that was acceptable, which, in our opinion, would have been single-family homes. Mr. Coe, he proposed to build quarter-acre lots, and we all came out in force against that, and that project had gotten killed. And now we're faced with 256 apartments. If this one is not approved, what's he gonna come up with next? Three-story buildings with 500, 600 apartments in them? What we're asking for is some sensible zoning, something to protect our homes. I have 2 acres that butt directly up against this thing. The problem is North Silver Lake Drive, with the traffic that's gonna come down upon us. And this particular commissioner also mentioned, well, these roads, that's what they're for, traffic. Well, that's true, but it brings other stuff into our neighborhood. It's not that, me personally, I'm not against growth, and I think, you know, growth is good. We're not gonna be able to stop that with the villages that we have around here, but we need sensible growth. And putting 256 apartments up against my home is not sensible growth. And, you know, down on the other side of 441, we also have lower Oaks. I couldn't find out how many units are in that place. Over by, on the other side of Lowe's, Lake Harris Cove Apartments, we got a ton of apartments there. Why do we have to build all these apartments up against my home? I would be more than willing to talk to Dr. Coe if he was reasonable about the size of these lots that he could put in back there. His representative, Greg Beliveau, I think I said his name right, he said that they couldn't sell half-acre lots up against the Arbers, but he wants to put 256 lots up, or units up against my 2 acres. This isn't reasonable. And I'm here to appeal to you to hear our plea, our neighborhood, who are trying to preserve it. We would ask you, please, do not allow this project to go forward. We'd ask you to vote against it and let Dr. Coe come back with some reasonable project that we could all live with. And, you know, the traffic, you know, apartments break crime, all this stuff's been touched on, but this is our plea for you guys tonight. We appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Hartman.
May I ask him something? Should I respond? I'm sorry that you were offended by some of the comments some of the commissioners may have made, and you definitely have a right to come here and hear, as well as by every means, put your opinion and how you feel about that. I'd like to just speak to this real quick, because maybe some of the people don't remember that meeting, but the two things that I would like to remind you are, if you'll remember, some of the people who came here on that meeting personally attacked and made some pretty strong end-to-endos against some of our commissioners.
And I did not agree with that.
Of personal profit.
I did not like that.
So, yeah, but it's very fair if someone's gonna come to televise commission meeting and make accusations like that to elected official, that they have the ability and the right to defend themselves and to take a stand, and I hope you understand that.
I did not approve of what was said in here, and I didn't like it myself personally, but...
But I'm just responding.
But what else was said?
Mr. Hartman, let him finish his comments, please.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
But for, I mean, I've been on here six years, and so, you know, one of the tasks that's been concerning for me is, you know, Leesburg has a housing shortage. That's just the truth. And so, you know, when you're gonna have a mall that's revitalizing itself, people are gonna have to have places to work, or they're gonna live in other cities, come to Leesburg, make their check, and go back to their cities and make money, things of that nature, you know. And so where I'm at, just to let you know how I feel from the Silver Lake area, I think you yourself own probably the oldest apartment complex on the west, the east side of Leesburg. Don't you own an apartment complex right there on Silver Lake?
Oh, yes, I do. I'm a landlord. I'm not against, I'm not against growth, trust me.
No, but I'm saying you own an apartment complex.
Yes, I do.
A very old apartment complex. So my point is, you know, whether we're trying to build $500,000 homes in Silver Lake, whether we're trying to build $1,800 a month nice apartments around Silver Lake, it just seems like it doesn't matter what we do. And the real bottom line is, the five of us have to look at the betterment of our community and providing nicer homes and providing places for people to live and tax revenue that will come in and be generated. These are all things that we have to look at. So, you know, there's gonna be other things here tonight, and I'm sure there's people in the room that's gonna oppose every single thing that we're gonna try to pass tonight, because everybody wants stuff, but they just don't want it next to them. And so I hope you understand where at least I'm coming from, you know. I'm trying to look at the whole, and I understand the traffic, or this, or the crime, or whatever, but, you know, I don't think that those are issues where we're talking. We're fixing to dump, you know, nobody wants it on, what's that side road again? What's the side street?
North Silver Lake Drive.
North Silver Lake Drive.
Road.
But the residents on Silver Lake Drive certainly had no problem putting the entrance on Morningside where all those houses are, because as long as it's on that street. And so you just have to be fair with this, you know, and that's been the issue for me the six years I've been sitting here, is trying to have balance, and that's all I'm saying. So I just wanted to let you know how I felt about the comments.
I could appreciate that you guys are between a rock and a hard spot with all this. You're not gonna please everybody, understand that. But, you know, the remarks I heard in here were generally directed that we don't appreciate people coming in here like an opposition. That I did appreciate. I did agree with the personal attacks I heard that night. I'm not part of that, and I hope you don't think I am.
No, sir.
And I understand what you're saying, but, you know, you guys are the ones that are in control of all the zoning around here. What gets done, what doesn't get done? You've got industrial areas, you've got major first-hand corridors going down the major highways, and you've got a whole lot of residential areas. It's up to you to make these transitions between all these areas nice. And, you know, Silver Lake, and I assume at some point, the city of Leesburg is gonna incorporate us or annex us into your city, and it would behoove you to keep our neighborhood nice, because it is a nice area. It would have been nice if Leesburg had bought the old golf course over there for 1.2 million, just so you had a municipal court. What an asset this would have been for Leesburg. But what are we doing now? How many houses are going in there? 102? And I see a for-sale sign over there. And Mr. Beliveau, he promised in here that this would be just straight grants, no would be Section 8 or any of that stuff. Well, what's to say Dr. Coe doesn't put a for-sale sign up on this property? What guarantee do we have that we're not gonna end up with a bunch of really bad housing behind us? We don't have that. And they had promised to put up a 6-foot fence and, I think, a 75-foot buffer. I would ask for at least 9 foot and 100 feet if you guys are really gonna obey this thing to, you know, to protect our homes. Because this isn't nice, but trust me. I don't think there's any of you that are sitting here, if you had my home, would be happy to have 256 apartments. And I'm a landlord, believe me. I understand this business.
Well, I probably wouldn't be happy to have your apartment complex, yours personal one, next door to that million-dollar house next door either. He probably'd like for you to tear that down and put a million-dollar home there, but that's not how the world revolves.
Yeah, you know, I've got a lot right behind that apartment building you're talking about, and at some point, I'd like to come in here and ask you to allow me to put 12 more units on it.
Well, just file your paperwork.
What's the paper gonna say?
Greg Beliveau's behind you, so he might help you with that one.
You know, they're gonna be chewing on me.
Right.
I understand all that, but my appeal is, is that you guys will mix this project, please, and let them come back with something reasonable, some residential, keep it low[1681.33] density housing for us.
Thank you, Mr. Hartman.
And help us preserve this.
Thank you, sir. And by commissioners, anything else there?
If maybe Mr. Beliveau could speak on behalf of Warren, isn't this the project where there are some sort of prohibitions on funding tied to subsidized housing?
Greg Beliveau with LPG, representing Dr. Ko. Yes, there's actually a condition that it will not be, so we made sure that if Dr. Ko does sell it, the next owner cannot flip it to a subsidized housing project. That was explicitly done before the first reading, so that is a condition. Also, there is a 50-foot buffer with a wall abutting all the residence. There's, as you'll notice in the aerial, there's one, two, three, four actual homes to the east of us and a vacant lot, and so we've put a 50-foot buffer with the wall there, and we also put a wall around the whole, practically the whole property, except for around the water body. So, that was actually requested for the first reading, so we did that as well. There's a gate to get into the property. We actually coordinated with Lake County Public Works over the road issue. We're going to donate right away along North Silver Lake's road, along our entire frontage for any road improvements that are required, and we will do the road improvements ourselves based on their requirements along that route. We also worked with them on the intersection of North Lake, or North Silver Lake and 44, and we're going to be doing turn lanes as well, and they even talked about if need be able to do a flasher there. Currently, there is no need for a traffic signal. I have with me tonight, if you'd like to hear from the traffic assaulter himself, Mr. West is here, who did the traffic analysis, and he'll testify about the actual traffic counts, the traffic impacts that we have, not only on 44 and 441, but along Silver Lake Drive. It's minimal. And our traffic, our traffic impacts themselves, and he's even done an analysis, if everybody in our project turned right and went through Silver Lake, what it would be, which they're not going to do. Because firstly, now that everybody's going to go to Taveri's, I mean, you've got two employment centers, actually, three employment centers from this property. You've got Eustis, Leesburg, and Taveri's, so you have people going in three different directions. Now, what percentage is, we don't know, but you've got three employment centers. So, you've got people going in three different directions. Hopefully, the majority will be going to Leesburg, but, you know, so you're making a guess, the model makes a guess, but not everybody's going right. Not everybody's going to Taveri's. So, you know, basically, that's not going to happen. I mean, we already had testimony during P&amp;Z that the car dealerships are driving around here, test-driving their cars around Silver Lake. We also had testimony that the mechanics are test-driving the cars after they do repairs around Silver Lake. So, we already know that there's traffic impacts that have nothing to do with us. So, if you want to hear from him, he'll be glad to, you know, give you, you know, true, analyzed, studied, scientific, or if you'd rather not waste your time, I'll be glad to step back and answer anybody else's questions or answer any more of your questions.
You got pictures there with you.
And, well, we actually did analysis as to the routes, and this is the other thing that we kind of find kind of interesting. When we did an analysis of the routes, travel routes, if you leave our site and go through Silver Lake to get to the light, it's actually 7,720 feet. That's one of the longest routes to take to get from our site to head out to 441. If you want to take, to get to 441 to head east or west, one of the shortest routes is the orange route. You head out of a property, hang a left, you go down to the green route, come down and get on the orange route, it's only 5,400 feet, and you're heading left or right. So, why would you go almost a mile and a half? We didn't go less than a mile. I mean, actually, a mile. I mean, it makes, people are human, human nature finds the leap path to least resistance. Now, if you want to make it a mile and a half because you're driving through the country and you have nothing better to do, okay, go through Silver Lake. But if you're actually going to work and trying to get somewhere, I'd go the green and the orange route and get, head to where I'm going. But these are the kind of things we looked at, and there's another traffic light option, and that's the green route that goes all the way to the west that goes to another traffic signal. So, you have other options other than driving through Silver Lake. Silver Lake isn't the only option of choice. And with that, if you'd like to hear Mr. West, he's available, and he's right behind me.
Your picture.
The site plan...
Oh, is that what that is?
Has been modified based on all our items of, we've got the notes on the financing, we've got the walls, we've got the 50-foot buffers.
Can you do a taller wall for the residents there on those four houses? Can you make it a 10-foot fence instead of a 5-foot tall?
Well, it's six foot now.
Okay, can you make it 10?
We could make it a 10, but I don't know if your ordinance allows anything eight.
Eight times.
We can make it eight.
Can you make it eight?
Sure.
I think anything over six feet would require a variance that could be written in here since this is a PUD.
I mean, we could do an eight, yes.
About cool with eight?
Well, that helps the neighbors.
I mean, we can do an eight, that's fine.
It's fine with me.
Yeah, that's fine.
I wouldn't want a wall, period. I personally would want landscape buffers, like if the residents want a wall, that's fine.
Big tree.
And, but, yeah, we can do the eight there and do the lesser height around the other sides everywhere.
Do you want to hear from the transportation?
I don't need anything.
No.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir. You have some commission?
Do we need to make, do we need to actually have a formal motion on the eight-foot addition?
Probably at the end, but need to hear all the comment first, so maybe other things you want to change.
Yes, sir.
If you don't mind, I'd like to make a comment, and thank you again for, you know, having this open discussion. I appreciate it. My name is Ken Stark. I'm a physician in the area. I've been here for 30 years a resident. I started out in the waterman emergency room, so I know about trauma and so forth, and I'm a resident of Silver Lake. I know that there are other residents here too, and many that couldn't make it because of the hour and their work schedule, and I think that, again, we're in a unique situation because we actually live there. I've lived there 30 years. I'm a runner, I've run marathons, I've run around Silver Lake many times. Tonight, driving over here, I had to drop my mother off at my house, two people on bicycles, driving on the lanes, you know, two people walking just tonight alone, and I really have concerns about the traffic issues. I wanted to bring up that this was a development project that was, we basically came and spoke to you 10 years ago, maybe a little bit longer than 10 years ago. Dr. Ko proposed developing this area, and if you remember, it was going to be homes. At the time, he had an attorney who represented him, who I personally knew, and she reassured me that, she said, you know, Dr. Ko wanted to develop this with buildings, she said, but we explained to him the impact that that would have, and that's why he presented the community at that time as homes rather than apartment buildings. I have to tell you, and you want factual information, Reggie Gardner is a well-known builder in the area. His daughter was hit by a car on Silver Lake while she was riding her bicycle. There have been other reports, but I can't substantiate who and when, but it's fact, and I'm sure if we had the police records, we would find that as well. Also, there was a fatality at that intersection of 44 and North Silver Lake Road a few years ago. It was a pregnant woman. You might have read about it in the papers, and as you know, that's a very dangerous, if you've driven through there, it's a very dangerous course of road. Of course, you could put up a traffic light, a blinking light's not going to work. Right now, of course, we don't have the impact that we're anticipating, so the route is relatively calm. North Silver Lake Road, as you know, is a dip. It goes up like a hill. When you're driving up from either way, you can't see the cars coming down, and of course, you know, you can develop that and correct that problem to some degree, but it's still a hill. The other thing I wanted to say was, I disagree about people using alternate routes. If you're going to go north on 441, you're going to go to 44, you're going to make a left turn. From the point where they'll have a street entering North Silver Lake Road, there's very little distance for more than two cars perhaps at a stoplight, so we're just really going to have a backup in the morning of people going to work trying to enter 44. And as you know too, 44, until they develop it and increase the lanes, is already a menace to us. You know that as you approach 441 from 44 during rush hour in the morning and the evening, it is backed up a good maybe eighth of a mile or whatever, you know, many, many cars, and people are waiting there. The other thing I wanted to say is, if anybody is going, Jay, please, you know, listen to what I'm having to say. If somebody...
Look at me.
No, I know, I just, you're just looking patient.
I was looking at the map. Now, why'd you say that to me?
Because I felt that you were being distracted and like, you know, you're moving around and it's like you weren't paying attention to me, and I just feel like I have a right to speak as well.
You do.
Okay, thank you.
He's not feeling well tonight, so, but he's looking at...
Okay, okay.
And I've heard this same speech 63 times, if that helps you. You have the microphone, and I'm not saying a word, I've been listening.
Okay, thank you.
I don't respect that at all.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, so, but the point about it is, if you make a right, if you're going to, if you're going south, if you're going towards Taveri's or south, you are not going to get on 44, you're going to make a right turn on the road, and you're going to enter, you're going to enter Silver Lake Drive, okay? Silver Lake Drive, again, is this area that you've heard many times about traffic, and it's true. There's a lot of traffic, there's a lot of pedestrians, there are women with carriages pushing babies, there are people running, there are bicyclists, and there really is a concern between that stretch and whether they go to Taveri's Road or they go to College Road to make a right turn to enter 441. And I think that it's something that really, we need to take into consideration, it's county property, they have not done anything about it, and I don't know if they're anticipating. There is a sidewalk, but it's not in that location, and I just think that this is very dangerous for the volume of cars that we can expect and the volume of people. I mean, it's a beautiful area. I love the fact that people can use the lake, they're more than welcome to, you know, to use it recreationally, it's wonderful, but it really isn't right now in the situation to handle more of this volume.
All right. Thank you, Doc Stark. We appreciate your comments, and I think we've taken them into consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much. Are there any public comment?
I kind of got one, I mean, I don't really understand, I got to go to the...
Yes, you got to come through, give us your name.
I think I kind of understand...
Give us your name for the record.
Oh, my name is Arsalan Conley. How y'all doing this evening?
Arsalan.
Arsalan Conley, A-R-S-C-E-L-O-N, last name A-C-O-N-N-E-L-Y. I think, when you think about how beautiful Silver Lake is, I always lived here, always grew up here. I don't really know about the traffic, but when you think about building stuff, stuff get built all the time, and when you think about young people seeing things, being developed and growing, the more beautiful something is, the more you dream. So, we can only build stuff around stuff that's negative and it has nothing to make the mind dream, you never think no bigger than you normally think. So, it shouldn't be nothing wrong with a little bit of development around Silver Lake. I mean, it's been beautiful forever, it's still going to be beautiful, but let people have an opportunity to look and see what you have so they can want to have what you have. You know what I'm saying? Don't be selfish and closed-minded because we all want better. And crime, how you get rid of crime, you create jobs. You understand? Somebody got a job, then they ain't going to steal nothing. You know what I mean? A man got food at his house, he ain't hungry, ain't going to take nothing. So, you know what I'm saying? Just, we got all worked together eventually, you know what I mean? Like, I got neighbors that don't like me. You know what I mean? I ain't got to do nothing to them, you know, but it's easy, it's easy to work together, you know what I mean? If we're willing to just sit down and really, really talk, like, you know, don't get mad at nobody about nothing, you know what I mean? Leesburg has been Leesburg, and one of the ugliest things, I think, growing up has ever been, is you can't get, hardly get a job more than $12 an hour, 40 hours a week, but it costs so much to live because everybody else who got money want to build where everything else is not so cute, and you looking to get 11, 12, $100 a month, 800, 900 dollars a month for rent, and then nobody ain't got nothing good, y'all got the college right there, so you got like, the college kids need to be drawn there, so, I mean, even they would have somewhere to stay, they still got to have somewhere to go. So, I don't think it's a bad thing, you know what I'm saying, to put something there, because the eyes cause the heart to dream. That's all I really wanted to say.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Did it come, final commission, final comments? Roll call, Miss Ann.
Commissioner Dennison?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, we need to make the motion about the, is it now Fred would make about the variance? Okay. Someone like make motion for the eight-foot fence?
So moved.
Second.
And then discussion? Okay, roll call, that, please.
Commissioner Dennison?
Yes.
Commissioner Peterson?
Yes.
Commissioner Robach?
Yes.
Commissioner Hurley?
Yes.
Mayor Christian?
Yes.
Roll call on the original motion.
Commissioner Peterson?
Yes.
Commissioner Robach?
Yes.
Commissioner Hurley?
Yes.
Commissioner Dennison?
Yes.
Mayor Christian?
Yes.
Item 5F is also second reading. Someone like introduce it.
I'd like to just ask you, Robert, to have a moment.
Thank you, sir.
An ordinance of the City of Leesburg, Florida, amending the comprehensive plan future land use map designation, excuse me, of certain property containing 46.5 plus minus acres, or property generally located north of US Highway 441, south of North Silver Lake Road, and southeast of County Road 44, as legally described in Section 1 Township 19 South, range 25 East, Lake County, Florida, and providing an effective date.
Motion?
Approval?
Thank you. Moved in properly, second, and discussion on the commission, discussion on the public.
I, excuse me, I questioned this the last time we had this, the first reading, and that is, why do we have to go to high density on that property? Couldn't we go to a smaller density, which I think everybody would be happy with?
I'm sure that really helped. It has to do with the developer.
Dean would just say it, will you?
No, if we tell the developer he can't build, then it's up to us.
We could go to a lower density as long as, I believe the actual density number, when it's broken out, and the 256 units with the 46 acres is something under six units an acre.
It's 13.
Is it 13?
It's 13, yes.
Gross, yeah, I'm talking about gross numbers. If we use gross numbers, which we normally do in all of our work, we could potentially go to medium, but that's using the gross numbers. Using the net numbers that Greg's talking about is 13. Our cutoffs are 18 for high-density, 12 at medium, so it poses a, how do you look at it? Normally, we use, we use gross density in what staff does, but this one kind of begs the question, if you use the number, a net density number, you come up with 13, which is over the median density.
There's 44 acres. So, 44 acres at six would make it, as long as you use the gross, but it won't do it with the net, because we only have 24 acres of net.
Okay.
So, if it's, if you're using the net and we can still get 256 units, I'm fine, but you got to also look at, is multifamily a permitted use versus a, you know, so he needs to check the policies real quick to make sure I'm not stuck in a category that says no multifamily is allowed through that policy, then I'm stuck.
Can more than 256 units be built, the way it's currently written?
Yeah, up to 350. We're only, we're not, we're leaving 94 units on the table, which we're not.
I'm saying, but based on the terms of the PUD, can more be built?
No, no.
256 is it?
Yes, sir.
So, you're concerned if you sell some items, they come back and they build 300 plus?
But they can't, so...
Under medium, under medium density is 12 units per gross.
So, we're good? If you want to drop us to medium.
But I got a commission wrong there. Right now, if the PUD says 256, it doesn't matter if it's high or low, or medium. If it's 256, it's 256. Is that correct, Fred?
Well, it still has to match the zoning category. Your PUD would have to fit in with the comp plan designation.
But so like currently, if we got them at high, and the PUD says 256, then that's where they're locked in.
This is, this particular item is the comprehensive plan amendment, and your PUD must by law conform to the comprehensive plan designation. So, if medium in the comp plan won't accommodate 256, then the 256 has to go down. If you were talking about pure zoning, which the PUD takes the place of, then you'd be correct, but in the comp plan designation, it trumps the zoning.
But just to make sure I understand, but I think we're trying to say is, if we went with high density, but the PUD says 256, even though there's 350 allowed in the high density, they still would be locked in at 256?
Yeah, unless they came back and got an amendment to that.
Okay.
Under medium density, it's up to 12 units per gross acre, and apartments are permitted, so it still works if you want it to be medium.
So, it's going to be 256 no matter what?
Yes, yes. And 12, and medium is fine if you want to have a victory that way.
Just want to ask one question. How are the market rents addressed? Is that in the PUD, or is it deed restrictions, or both?
No, we actually have a clause that, basically, this will be, there will be no options to go through a subsidizer.
Okay, you see where I'm going with that question?
Yes, yeah, we're not...
I guess I'm trying to learn something, also be sure that this thing is intertwined.
Yes, cause we, we basically, that was a request, that this never get flipped to somebody who, you know, do anything like Section 8, or, you know, subsidize, or do it in, in the lottery pool, or anything like that, and this will not be.
So, it's in the PUD?
It is in the PUD, Doc.
Thank you.
You have a comment? You good with that?
Yeah, thanks.
Public comment? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Robach?
Yes.
Commissioner Hurley? Commissioner Dennison?
Yes.
Commissioner Peterson?
Yes.
Mayor Christian?
Yes.
FG, it's also a second reading.
Let her introduce and ask you, Robert, tell it one more.
An ordinance of the city of Leesburg, Florida, rezoning approximately 46.5 plus minus acres, from County R1 Rural Residential, to City PUD Planned Unit Development, for multifamily residential development on a property generally located north of US Highway 441, south of North Silver Lake Road, and southeast of County Road 44, as legally described in Section 1 Township 19 South, range 25 east Lake County, Florida, and providing an effective date.
Motion?
Please for approval.
Second.
Moved in properly, second. Discussion?
Mayor, on this, since this is actually the PUD, the motion should include the eight-foot fence.
Eight-foot fence, okay.
Wall.
The wall. All right, so you have a motion, a second, you have a motion to include the eight-foot wall?
So moved.
Second.
All right, this discussion, from the commission, from the public. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hurley?
Yes.
Commissioner Dennison?
Yes.
Commissioner Peterson?
Yes.
Commissioner Robach?
Yes.
Mayor Christian?
Yes.
Now, the original motion, any discussion from the commission, from the public? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Dennison?
Yes.
Commissioner Peterson?
Yes.
Commissioner Robach?
Yes.
Commissioner Hurley?
Yes.
Mayor Christian?
Yes.
Item FH, also a second reading. Someone like to introduce it, please?
I'll introduce. Ask, not to you, Ed. Oh, this is a skate green, or is this a skate?
An ordinance of the city of Leesburg, Florida, annexing certain real property consisting of approximately 9.65 acres, being generally located on the south side of State Road 44, east of Whitney Road, lying in Section 29, Township 19 South, range 24 east Lake County, Florida, which is located within the inter-local service boundary agreement area of the city of Leesburg and Lake County, Florida, provided that said, said property so annexed shall be liable for its proportionate share of the existing and future indebtedness of said city, providing that such annexed property shall be subject to all laws and ordinances of said city, as if all such territory had been a part of the city of Leesburg at the time of passage and approval of said laws and ordinances, providing that such annexed territory shall be placed in City Commission District 1, and providing an effective date.
You have a motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
Moved in properly, second. Any discussion from the commission? Public comment? Yes, sir.
I've done more. I'm Thomas Clark, and I live on Whitney Road. I've done more research and, and analysis, and a lot of people like my analysis. Okay, NASA liked it, uh, nuclear power plants liked it, okay? And I could develop all the software for them, so I'm not an ignorant person. First off, none of this property even fronts 44 at all. State Route 44 does not touch this property at all, zero. There's only two quote-unquote roads that front this thing, Black Star, okay? There's no right-of-way, and it's a dirt road, and if you look at the map, you can actually see it curves up, and it actually goes to his house. That's the only use of Black Road, Black Star now, it's a dirt road, okay? No right-of-way at all, so that map is wrong, there's no right-of-way for it. I've talked to the county. I met with them. Okay, also met with him on Whitney Road. Okay, Whitney Road there, there's no right-of-way, period. There's a pathway, to classify it as a pathway, okay? Paved by the county. It's only laying and a half wide. To make it any wider, you're gonna have to move three telephone poles, okay, and about four trees. Okay, so you're not gonna get a whole lot of traffic through there at all, okay? Currently, people have said, I won't mention names, that there are hundreds and hundreds of cars go up and down Whitney Road because of the party barn. No, it does not. Okay, my office, the room I use is an office, my house is 30 feet off that road. I count them every single time they go by. There's not hundreds and hundreds. There's barely ever 50, okay? That road cannot handle the traffic, period, okay? It's already starting to crumble on the sides from the trucks going up and down. And a lot of trucks use it to haul tractors back and forth to the Tractor Museum, okay? So, I don't know, you know, how you're gonna even get wider, okay? It has, even in the minutes from the, from your own planning zoning meeting, Seth said, he's not gonna do anything, okay, for either one of those roads. So, nothing's gonna be, no improvements gonna be done there. I also called the state, okay, there's nothing going to be done there. Okay, so the traffic is just gonna mount up and go crazy, okay? Also went through the five-year plan, okay, for the county, for the development and road construction. There's no mention in there at all taking, of doing anything with 44, okay? And you worry about computation of traffic on 44, okay, I did the analysis. I've done analysis, okay, for the last 20 years, okay? I will not give you my math formulas, they're mine, okay? I developed them, and you'll find that within the next nine years, traffic on 44 will triple, okay? And that's done by the number of times people leave their houses, and the number of times the villagers use golf carts compared to cars, and the whole bit, okay? You're just gonna overload that traffic, and you're gonna create jams. You can find tire tracks right now in the mud, okay, because the left-hand turn, okay, from the east side on 44, okay, it's not a 90-degree turn. You'll find tracks in the mud for people getting stuck, okay, that have missed the road and driven in the mud. Fortunately, they missed the tree, cause the mud slowed them down, okay? It's gonna be a dangerous place to be.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. And the public comment? All right, commissioners, you ready to vote? Yes, ma'am.
Uh, Mr. Clark brought up a good issue. I went over there and went down that road with the, the big oak trees on either side, with another car coming at me from the other direction, and we both had to really move over to the point of where I was, like, between two trees to let that car go by. So, that really is an issue over there as far as danger and, and whatnot. So, can anything be considered on this, when the planning and development start with the entertainment center?
Because the, excuse me, because the roads are under county jurisdiction, staff doesn't have any authority to require anything. What we did require was that, should Lake County or DOT come back with you need to widen roads, then we're saying, yes, you have to follow along with whatever Lake County and DOT says. Since the city of Leesburg does not have jurisdiction, we could not specifically put in here that you have to do something. Now, the city attorney may have a different idea on that. That's how we've handled these things.
No, I, I agree with Dan, since it's a county road, the city doesn't have any jurisdiction to mandate improvements on it. The county may not want improvements on it. They are, they would require the city to take the road over in that event, but that's not something the city typically does, is mandate improvements on roads governed by some other jurisdiction. The normal practice is, as Dan described it, to say, if the other jurisdiction says you gotta do it, then you have to do it.
Yeah, I really do see the concern with this, but this was daylight, you know, it was a morning hour. What happens if they're coming out of there at night? There's no lights or anything else down that road. So, I, I just wanted to stress my concern, that's all.
We do have the, um, property owner here, Scott, mayor, and here, so if you wanna address some of those concerns, and.
Hello, Commissioner Scott Chrisley. Um, we did have a traffic two, uh, tier-two study done. Just so that you all know, Dan does have a copy of that. It came back saying that it weren't gonna have any major impacts on the road, uh, and that we weren't required to do anything. Uh, after meeting with the county, and, and it is true, the county doesn't even know how that road is there, they don't, they say it's not theirs. We are giving them the extra right-of-way that they wanted on our property, uh, to come to 33 feet from center of the road onto our property. Uh, currently, it shows 25 on my deed. However, the county doesn't have any record of ever receiving those right-of-ways on Whitney Road. So, that's a county issue. We are giving them our right-of-way, what they asked us for, uh, but without a lot of other right-of-ways, there's no way to do any improvements on there as far as the county is concerned. So, I just wanted to kinda give you that little bit of information, that where we have moved through, we are trying to address any issues. And, and there was also something brought up about lighting. I'd just like to mention with that is all, uh, all the lighting will be contained on our property. There'll also be, uh, architect Judd, uh, Judd, um, will be making sure that there's a light study done, to make sure we don't have any light that goes off of our property, and make sure that we keep everything as possible as, you know, as good as we possibly can. So, we are trying to address that. Do you have any questions for me?
Scott or Dan, maybe you can help me. How, how far is from Whitney Road where their subject property to 44? Just add. One tenth of a mile? And, and I was just wondering, with Commissioner talking about the lighting situation, so on your property, it will be entertainment things done at night. Um, you know, you're doing a light study, but I think if you light the property up bright enough, you don't have much space from 44 to your property. So, from a security point, I think people leaving the skate facility won't have much room to say there'll be a darkness from, from that road. Maybe we can talk to the county about adding additional light, or maybe the, the city can do something, so that little particular area we can light up at night, so it, so it will be safe.
And we have trees along the entire back of the property that we will, will not be removed, that'll help keep the light from going back into the neighborhood at all, so. And of course, we don't expect that traffic is going to go down Whitney Road. Uh, it is a dead-end road, so there really isn't a reason for them to be going down into the back part of the neighborhood. I, I will have to say that Paquette had his, uh, annual tractor thing here the other day, and I would have to disagree, as I sat there and watched the lines of cars and semis going in and out, uh, on that Friday, Saturday, or, I'm sorry, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, that there was hundreds of cars going down that road, all the way back to Paquette's property, uh, on his event that he did, so. You know, and they do a lot of events. We have our 40-year class reunion coming up there next month, for the classes 78, 79 here in Leesburg, and that we're at the Paquette facility Saturday night. So, you know, they do a lot of events there. But again, I don't feel our traffic is going to go back and impact the neighbors behind us, because they really have no reason to go further than coming there and going into our facility, so.
I wanted to add, excuse me, Scott was talking about the lighting a moment ago. If this gets to the PUD stage, one of the things that we wanted to add into the PUD language is a dark skies provision, and that's basically a concept of having lower lighting that is directed directly down onto a property versus a, a standard light that lights up a 360-degree area, simply focused. And it's a provision that we're using in our PUDs to, uh, help prevent light pollution. And we've already talked to, uh, Mr. Chrisley about it. Um, he was fine with it, so I wanted to add that into the PUD if it gets to that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
So, at the end of the day, we're looking at a piece of property that sets 500 feet off of 44, basically. To the northwest is the Florida Department of Transportation's water drainage. To the west is a pasture. To the north of it is commercial property. To the east of it, there's a house, and then a big warehouse that'll set further back than vacant industrial land. So, this falls right in line with all that, and it has, as you say, I don't know why anybody would turn left on that unless they wanted to see Mr. Paquette's tractors, which are really cool. So, I, I, I don't, I don't understand how it has a big impact on the back of the neighborhood.
Any other commissioner comments? Ready to vote?
Mm-hmm.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Peterson?
Yes.
Commissioner Robach?
Yes.
Commissioner Hurley?
Yes.
Commissioner Dennison?
Yes.
Mayor Christian?
Yes.
Five I's also second reading. Someone like to introduce it, please?
Let her introduce and ask you, Robert, tell it one more.
An ordinance amending the comprehensive plan of the city of Leesburg, changing the future land use designation of certain property containing approximately 9.65 acres, from Lake County Regional Office to City of Leesburg General Commercial, for property generally located south of State Road 44 and east of Whitney Road, as legally described in Section 29 Township 19 South, range 24 east Lake County, Florida, and providing an effective date.
Move for approval.
Moved in properly, second. Discussion from the commission? From the public? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Robach?
Yes.
Commissioner Hurley?
Yes.
Commissioner Dennison?
Yes.
Commissioner Peterson?
Yes.
Mayor Christian?
Yes.
Item five J, second reading. Someone like to introduce it, please?
I'll introduce and ask you, Robert, tell it one more.
An ordinance of the city of Leesburg, Florida, rezoning approximately 9.65 acres, from Lake County A Agriculture to Spud Small Plan Unit Development, for property generally located south of State Road 44 and east of Whitney Road, as legally described in Section 29 Township 19 South, range 24 east Lake County, Florida, and providing an effective date.
Motion to approve?
Move for approval.
Second.
And if we need to add the amendment?
Yes, sir. We request that you would add under Section 4F, um, dark sky lighting provision, and we'll get the wording.
Move to add dark sky lighting.
Any discussion on the commission, from the public? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hurley?
Yes.
Commissioner Dennison?
Yes.
Commissioner Peterson?
Yes.
Commissioner Robach?
Yes.
Mayor Christian?
Yes.
Now, to the original motion, any discussion on the commission, from the public? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Dennison?
Yes.
Commissioner Peterson?
Yes.
Commissioner Robach?
Yes.
Commissioner Hurley?
Yes.
Mayor Christian?
Yes.
Item five K is the first reading. Someone like to introduce it, please?
I'll introduce. Ask you, Robert, tell it one more.
An ordinance of the city of Leesburg, Florida, amending the zoning on approximately .165 plus minus acres in a C2 Community Commercial Zoning District, to add a PDO Planned Development Overlay, for property generally located east of South Street, south of West Magnolia Street, and north of West Dixie Avenue, and providing an effective date.
Any discussion from the commission on this?
Al, what'd you think of that?
This is on the, on the SOQL issue, right? Yes. I think this is a difficult one, as, you know, as far as where you want staff to go on this. Staff has kinda taken an approach to try to encourage development, um, at, I'm not gonna say all costs, but to, to encourage redevelopment. We think that, we think that we've done that here. I do think there's a double-edged sword with respect to parking. We have used the parking issue, um, in the past, to whereby if, uh, a petitioner can get a parking agreement with a neighboring property, we've accepted that. There is a rule that goes along with that exception that states that if, uh, that agreement goes away, the petitioner is required to provide that parking. That does put the city in a bit of a pickle, because ultimately, the city would say, your business is shut down if you can't provide this parking. And I, you know, I don't know how much meat we really have to be able to do that. So, that is, that is precarious. In this situation, the deficiency is about two to three parking spots that we see. The requirement, based on the square footage, is around 16 spots, and Dan can correct me if, if I'm wrong. We think reasonably, the petitioner can get about 13, maybe 14 spots on that lot. So, in the worst-case scenario would be, in this case, if, um, the, uh, situation happened where the petitioner didn't have the required parking, he's too short, and, and all practical purposes, he probably can't get that. We think, uh, on a staff level, we recommended it. We think that, that we thought that this was a good redevelopment project. We thought that this would be a benefit to the downtown area, um, so it came from us with a favorable recommendation. I, I, I think it's one of those ones that, that is a difficult decision, that always gets everybody a little squirmy on what to do, but we think that this was a reasonable development. We also think that there's some other reasonable public parking in and around that area, although everybody always complains about it. But, um, with the public works facility being tore down in that area, you know, I, I, one of the things that we'll be doing is the downtown master plan. So, so some thought will go into where we do address parking. I think that old public works area is probably one of those areas that will get a little more consideration for parking. Also, just around the corner, behind the Art, Fine Arts Center, kinda where you see the two circles on the picture, that's the, that's the Partnership Fine Arts Building there. As we relocate the Water Department, which is a little bit more to the west over there, there'll be some additional parking picked up. And our plan is to kinda clean up that fence row, um, to the north, or, to the south of the partnership, to the north of the subject property that's still just off Third Street, where we think we can pick up parking. So, frankly, we're taking a little bit of gamble, but, but we think that the redevelopment in that structure is, is worth the gamble that we're taking, and that's why we've got the favorable recommendation.
In addition, if I may add to what the city manager said, under Section 7C, we added a requirement that the developer, the owner, will have to get a written parking agreement that provides adequate off-site parking per City of Leesburg codes, and then have that parking agreement recorded at the county clerk's office. So, it would be quite official.
Well, well, for me personally, I don't have a problem with it. I think we need to do even more to help develop the downtown area. I think we should look at our ordinances as it relates to multifamily housing, as it relates to business, cause I think we have some, some areas just like this where it's almost impossible to develop, and I think this is a perfect example of regular city codes may not apply to older established neighborhoods as far as downtown. If we wanna really see it develop, you gotta have people downtown that's gonna use your shops, use your restaurants. So, I would like in that master plan to look at our codes and orders that can help encourage people to actually build. I was in Mount Duro on Sunday. Of course, they have a lot of existing buildings, which we don't have. But in order for the business to be successful, we gotta have people downtown. I think, oh, you're gonna get people downtown, you got to build, um, apartments of something that's gonna townhouse, it's gonna put people there. So, I think, and you look at our ordinances, and increase our density to make it proper for developers to even consider doing something downtown to get. consider doing something downtown to get people there. So I'm all on board with what you're trying to do to make this ugly building become usable, because it is an ugly building, it's a metal building, and they try to get decided by numerous times. So to see a private owner get it and develop it, I think for me, it's a plus. With two parking spots, I can live with. So I'll pass it down to somebody else. Jay, you started. So it's the first reading, but Jay, you got anything?
Well, I just wanted to talk about it, and I think Mr. Soco's here.
Yes, sir.
Do you want to come on up, man, so I can run some of this by you, just so you'll know kind of where we're coming, or where I'm coming from, anyway. As he knows, I'm extremely excited about something happening, and I think this definitely falls within our downtown district. So it's not that I have a problem with that. And he already has a successful business just a couple blocks away, so we know what kind of business it's going to be. My issue is going back, there's a couple of things that I would like to see, and this goes back to what we've been talking about for six years, okay? We have somebody that has an owner. First off, to be funny, I may or may not have ever been to a bar, but a successful bar is never run with 16 people. So forget that nonsense that he's going to make money because 16 people show up there. That's just goofy. It's going to be handicap spaces in the front, a food truck in the back, and he's going to have three parking spots, and six bikers are going to take that up, and he's empty. So, you know, he don't want to run a business on 16 people a day either. So my concerns were, I just wanted to talk about this because parking is such a prevalent issue right now for us down there. And so, you know, you can set a pattern, and if you allow it here, then all of a sudden, you opened up the door, and you set a precedence that might be too hard to close, and that's kind of some of my concerns later down the path, is to make sure if you're going to have an establishment like this, restaurants and bars and things like that, where they're going to have a lot of patriots coming at one given time. My other fear was, if we don't, you know, he does have a, from my understanding, he does have an agreement already for parking across the street, which is fine, but you know how that goes. Someone sells it, dies, passes it on, whatever, you never know how things are five years down the road, whatever, and that leaves us in this quandary that we're in, what to do. Then if people start parking in front of houses on that street, you know, the neighbors get mad, so now we got to go out and put no parking sign up. Then the neighbor's mad because they can't park in front of their house, and it just snowballs into this little bit of an issue. So all I was wanting to do is just address a little bit, I had two issues. I just wanted us to address it a little bit, to know, and maybe, as you said, when we start our master plan, we should make sure we guide this so we don't open ourselves up for other things that could potentially be like, well, you know, I could have this, and you just have to figure out my parking for me, and that's fine. My second thing is, is I'm a little disappointed right now with planning and zoning, because while he is definitely going to be making a ton of improvements on the inside and adding some deck spaces and things like that, you know, I didn't see anything taking the parking lot, whether they turn it into gravel so that there's no impact, you know, environmental impacts, or whether they, you know, are asphalt and no landscaping. So my point is, as we're working through this, this is an old adage, somebody's willing to buy a building, let's just be happy for it and not put any architectural design to it. And then every time we have something built, we all sit here and go, man, I wish we'd have put some architectural design to this and helped lift that up. So all I'm trying to say is, as we're moving, especially downtown, we got a real rich guy here that wants to spend a lot of money on Leesburg.
You're talking about me. I don't know that.
But I just want, I mean, John, I just.
I understand your concerns.
I want it to look good.
I do, too, right.
And I want it to help lift that area up so other development around you will help you as well. So this is something that we've been fighting and working to accomplish for six years, and I don't want to take a step back just because I like it, or I want another watering hole on, you know, Magnolia Street. So I'm just looking to see if maybe we can tweak anything, you know, gravel that looks nice, and that's maybe concrete edging around it that holds it in place, and, you know, a little bit of landscaping to clean it up and to put, I mean, I know you're going to put paint and all that kind of stuff, but you know what I'm saying. Just something, I'm not asking you to spend a fortune, but something that on the outside makes it aesthetically appeasing when you go by and helps lift that area up.
Well, you know, and then part of the plan is, you know, those old garage doors are being replaced with newer glass garage doors. There's decks on either side, there'll be new decks. So that right there alone will bring the aesthetic look of the building up. The City Arts Council brought, came to my attention, saying that they would consider putting a mural up on that building. It'd be kind of neat, it would be a nice little option to have something kind of unique as you come down that road and catch your attention, too. But I agree with you that, you know, we want to make the property look good, we want to make it look inviting. The way it looks now, it's not inviting. I agree with you 100%.
Okay. So would you be open to gravel, parking, and?
Well, it's pretty much gravel now.
There's some rocks under that bed, I know, but that's not.
Yeah, I'm okay with doing gravel. I'm okay with that.
And then that has no environmental impacts, does it? That doesn't affect, there's no drainage issues at that point or anything that have to come into play, so we don't have to carve out any retention or anything of that nature.
If there's no drainage issues, it goes into the ST4, I forget the name of the system. It all goes into the city system, so he's fine there. I would also like to point out there are architectural standards required in the PDO and landscaping and buffer requirements as well, so.
Well, I like the pictures. I just didn't see any landscaping or note anything right here.
I've been working on John and talking with him, how we're going to be pushing him on that.
It's been mentioned several times, Mr.
John, we need landscaping.
We can do that.
It's just a couple of beers per guy.
Is that how we figured that out?
Yeah.
He's going to be counting on you to pay for the landscaping.
I don't drink, of course, but Peterson will.
Any other commissioner comment?
So that's all I have.
I understand.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
All right, yeah, if he's willing to do that, I'm on board. And I do want us to address it, Al, parking, I mean, when we do our plan. We got to think, not just for him, but for other people. I mean, that parking, I think, is really going to become one of our pressing issues.
Y'all walked four blocks yesterday.
I don't want to walk four.
I was kind of impressed. I said, it's full, and it was on a Sunday afternoon, so hopefully.
The property that's being developed around me on both sides, what's happening with that property? Whether cleaning everything up, I think.
That's the city property, that's the Public Works property.
What's going to happen to that property?
We're looking to make in that parking.
So that down the line was definitely solved some of the issues that we're talking about.
Unless somebody wants to develop it, then we would probably change our mind.
Well, John, I mean, I hope you don't misunderstand.
I do. I totally understand what you're coming from.
If we did have to start parking on streets, it is just a given that that would be a problem.
And I don't think it's allowed anywhere. I don't think there's any parking allowed on Second Street.
So I just want to make sure that we're not running into a problem.
And I understand, right.
That we have adequate place, you know.
And I'm okay with that.
Parking is 100% what we need.
If you got nowhere to put them, they're not going to come.
No, nobody's going to walk nine blocks.
We already know that. They won't walk a block and out.
Commissioner Peterson has some.
Thank you so much. Any?
No, I mean, I guess, you know, as a real estate person, if he's comfortable with the parking, I'm fine. I'm surprised you don't want more parking, but I'm not considering mandate parking.
It's not the easiest thing to come by. We've looked at it in every possible direction.
Well, you're downtown. I guess you hope you're going to benefit from the trail, right?
Yeah, the trail, I'm hoping to down the line. I know that's in a part of the master plan. I've talked to Joe about that, and the state has, it's supposed to happen per the state. When it'll happen, we're not quite sure, but it's part of a plan.
Hopefully, as downtown grows, people will walk there and so forth. But, you know, I'm not going to say here mandate your parking ratio. I mean, you're the business owner.
Right.
Sure, you know, you want more parking. Seems like a small site to me, but I'm glad you're redeveloping it.
Thank you.
Commissioner Robach?
Yeah, I had a question actually for Dan. What was the PDO? Why are we wanting to keep the C2 zoning and not rezone it?
The option would be to go to either a PDO, which is a Plan Development Overlay, or a PUD, which is a Plan Unit Development. The PDO keeps the underlying zoning, and then you put a layer on top of that, which is sort of like an optional layer, and that's where you can deviate from the underlying zoning in order to make things work. PUD would be an entire zoning district like C2 or something. So essentially, what we're doing in this case is remaining, leaving the remaining, I think it was C2, underlying, which allows the uses. And then by putting the PDO on there, we can add as far as the landscaping, the parking, any other issues that we need to adjust.
So he doesn't even need to do this at all? He can just open it up under C2? Or the parking?
No, the parking would require it, adding some landscape, because on a site like this, you need to be creative with the landscaping. If you do a straight five-foot buffer all the way around, it can take up area that could be used for parking, but if we make it in front of the building and then on the corners and make it really pop, it actually looks better. So we wanted to use something creative to help them with this.
Yeah, sounds good.
The only other thing, I know, we talked a little bit about the gravel, okay? I do think we're probably going to need to talk a little bit about whether that is impervious, because that might have some effect.
I would have to give Adrian on any of the various type issues.
So would it, when we come back to second reading, we'll square it away, and we'll get you more info on that.
Thank you. Any other? Commissioner Dennison, anything?
Nothing, thanks.
All right. Thank you, Mr. John. This item will lay over. Item M, FM's the first reading. L? Okay. Yes, L, I'm sorry. First reading. Somebody like to introduce it?
An ordinance of the city of Leesburg, Florida, annexing certain real property consisting of approximately 4.38 acres, being generally located north of County Road 44 and east of Shady Acres Road, lying in Section 1 Township 19 South, range 25 East Lake County, Florida, providing that said properties so annexed shall be liable for its proportionate share of the existing and future indebtedness of said city, providing that such annexed properties shall be subject to all laws and ordinances of said city, as if all such territory had been a part of the city of Leesburg at the time of passage and approval of said laws and ordinances, providing that such annexed territory shall be placed in City Commission District 1, and providing an effective date.
Comments on the commission? Dan, you have some?
Yes, sir. Actually, two quick items. On item 5L, which is this annexation, I must have fallen asleep. It says small scale comp plan under the subject line. It should have said annexation on the agenda memo. And on the PUD, this is again a first reading, on the PUD, we needed to delete, per the Planning Commission, Section 5B under Development Standards and Operations. There was some redundant text in there. So I needed to delete that. That was all. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. This item will also lay over. Item 5M, it's the first reading. Someone like to introduce it?
I'll introduce. Ask me right by title only, please.
Thank you.
An ordinance amending the comprehensive plan for the city of Leesburg, changing the future land use map designation of certain property containing approximately 4.38 acres, being generally located north of County Road 44 and east of Shady Acres Road, lying in Section 1 Township 19 South, range 25 East Lake County, Florida, from Lake County urban medium density to City of Leesburg general commercial and providing an effective date.
Comments on the commission? This item will also lay over. Item 5M, Ian, I'm sorry. This is the one he wants us to strike out 5B. Someone like to introduce it?
An ordinance of the city of Leesburg, Florida, rezoning approximately 4.38 acres from Lake County CP Planned Commercial to City Spud Small Plan Unit Development for property generally located north of County Road 44 and east of Shady Acres Road, as legally described in Section 1 Township 19 South, range 25 East Lake County, Florida, and providing an effective date.
Any comments from the commission? Do you need to do anything about the 5B? Fred, do we need to?
Not this time. You don't vote on it now. That would be the next reading.
And I know the applicant is here, and he has a presentation. Can you email that to us by chance? Do we have for the next reading? All right, thank you, sir. Item 5O is the first reading. Someone like to introduce it?
An ordinance of the city of Leesburg, Florida, amending the zoning on approximately 72.81 plus minus acres to allow for industrial uses in a PUD, Planned Unit Development, zoning for a property generally located north of Griffin Road, west of Thomas Avenue, and east of County Road 468, as legally described in Section 16 and 21 Township 19 South, range 24 East Lake County, Florida, and providing an effective date.
Comments from the commission? Dan, what's actually going to happen on this?
There's only two small changes. Under the PUD for Leesburg Fruit Company, Section 3A, we're adding number 11, which is adding back industrial uses, which is what it had there before, before it changed to the solar farm. And then under Section 3C, just adding back the setbacks and the standards for uses for industrial dis, very simple, two very small changes. Originally, this property was industrial. They wanted to make it a solar farm. Solar has not caught on like we expected in the last three or four years, so they want to bring industrial uses back as a potential use. That's it. That's all there is to it.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments on the commission? Right, this item will lay over. Item 6, Information Reports, there are none. For fiscal year 2018, 19, I audited first quarter financial reports. Anything you want to point out to us?
Nope.
Any comments on the commission? Okay, City Attorney items.
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. City Manager items.
Just, I'm going to give you a quick little handout. One of the things, just in our kind of public information efforts that we're trying to do, this is a project that Travis did, just to give some info and brag on the rec department a little bit. So when you peruse that at your leisure, just for your FYI, I think it was some good stuff, shows you how busy the direct department, and we'll try to get the word out about all the things we're doing over there.
Sounds good.
That's it?
That's it.
Oh, wow, okay. Public comment. This section is reserved for members of the public to bring up matters of concern or opportunists of praise. Issues brought up will not be discussed in detail at this meeting. Issues will be either referred to the proper staff or be scheduled for consideration at a future city commission meeting. Comments are limited to three minutes, please. Any public comment? If not, roll call, please.
Commissioner Hurley?
Nothing to me.
Commissioner Robach?
Yes, so I had the opportunity to go to Lake County Legislative Days last week along with Al, and it was mostly good. Just talked about electric and gas stuff, so nothing too terribly exciting. But one thing that did come up a bit concerning, and I followed up this week, and that is that the county's number one legislative priority is funding for the realignment of State Road 50, which is a good project. However, the way they've requested that, if they get their appropriation, it just gets taken away from the NPO. So all the other cities lose. They claim that's not the case, and I think they just, and I tried to get all the county manager to explain to him, because I got the, from, it's very clear in statute, but I got the NPO director to confirm that, no, that's absolutely what will happen. So maybe it's just a misunderstanding. But if it's not, I'm going to bring it up at the NPO meeting Wednesday. I'll certainly let you know, because we may need to reach out to some legislators and let them know. We're okay with the project, but don't do it at the expense of every other project in Lake County, because there's a process, the NPO, for that. And when people talk about home rule, they'll talk about home rule, but then they're going in and advocating for something that's very directly against that and letting the legislature just pick all our transportation projects. And then I also went to, attended the Leesburg Black Heritage Gala, and our mayor was the leader of the year, and so he's cleaning up on the awards circuit. I believe he won the chamber leader of the year as well, so congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
Commissioner Peterson?
Nothing tonight.
Commissioner Dennison?
Yeah, I received a couple calls from constituents this week. One of them, I know we talked about ice machines, and that was primarily on Main Street. This person would like to put one in right coming up 27 North. Before you get to the high school on the left, there's a triangular piece of property with plenty of parking and access off of 27, and he would like to use an acre of that and put an ice machine there. So before he goes through all the applying for, anything he's got to apply for, he'd like to know what, if we are open to doing that. It wouldn't be on Main Street, it'd be off 27, it would be landscaped and everything else.
So I'm familiar with this project as well, and I will say, the alternative that use that's been expressed interest there is a vape shop, and it's currently zoned for a vape shop. There's absolutely nothing we can do to stop some uses, but an ice machine in particular, we would have the opportunity to put landscape requirements and do other things on. So I think, you know, no, I wouldn't want ice machines anywhere, but certain spots, I'm not.
Yeah, especially when it's, you know, landscaped and looks decent and everything. And there's not going to be any disruption on 27 because there's plenty of access off the road. And as, just to let people know, this is a former commissioner, so I just want to let you know that.
Just, and I appreciate the feedback, and you bringing this before us tonight, because that former commissioner is. because that former commissioner has reached out to the planning department, so we're a little bit familiar with it. And we're, and this is another one of those tricky ones, because technically throughout the downtown area, 27 or Main Street, the ice shops are not permitted. And, but, you know, there is a way to get around that, and that's through a PUD, and we can do that, we could zone this if the commission is concerned about what it's currently zoned for, like the vape shop example. Okay, we could do a PUD for the ice, the ice dispensary, and then put in some restrictions that, that help close it off and those type of things. My only concern is, is that I do think that's a spot zoning type of thing. I think we need to be careful about how we use PUDs, because I don't think we want a spot zone with PUDs. If the commission wants to do the gamble and, and do the quid pro quo, we can prepare something for you. And, and, you know, we can, we can go through the process. That's where it's at. I think it's tricky. So I, essentially, the petitioners is poking at the commission to figure out how you're going to vote before they spend the money on going through the process to get it rejected. And that's where, you know, I think staff thinks this is a tricky one. On, on the surface, we would probably recommend not to use a PUD to do this. But the flip side of the equation is, eh, it could be sold for some type of commercial activity that we don't like. But if it goes for a commercial activity you don't like, you know, you still have some, you know, monument sign stuff and the newer stuff that they still have to comply to. So my recommendation to the commission would be to stick tight with, with the code.
Which piece of property is it?
It's, I don't know.
Music store and computer repair shop. There's a billboard and there's like a triangular.
On the left side of the road, same as the music store?
Directly north of MMD.
So you think it could be challenged, then?
Yeah, I do. I don't know if it was.
What would be challenged?
If, if you improperly use a PUD to spot zone.
So right now, the current zoning allows for it?
No, the current zoning does not allow for it. We think you could, I think there's.
Guessing C3.
Current zoning, excuse me, current zoning on that property is C3. Part of the issue is that an ice machine is an accessory structure, and under our code, you have to have a primary structure before you can have an accessory structure.
Can we do a variance?
No.
I mean.
So someone could put a vape shop with an ice machine?
Yes.
But it's right next to the high school, so I don't think we want that.
Or you can have, or you can have a Walmart with an ice machine, or a Publix with a ice machine, but you just can't have a singular use that is an ice machine. And the way we're, we would, if, if you want to see an ice machine there, the way we would weave this is through a PUD. I think that can kind of stand a test, but yeah, I do, I think a challenge.
Why would we, why does the ordinance even have that? I mean, why do we, why did we structure it that way at the beginning?
You didn't want ice machines.
Who did?
The, the, the community.
Okay, okay. Thank you. I was a little confused by this, too.
The code, the code says no to ice machines as a primary use. I think that the intent of the code is.
Because I guess if somebody had a piece of land and just put an ice machine next to Second Street, next to a business, you got an ice machine, so I think the code says you got to have a business, because I could imagine, when I see ice machines, I see people who got a boat, they pull their truck with a boat, they fill the boat up. So I'm going to look at this little piece of property here on 27 by MMD, where I got two trucks with two boats and they're back going, filling the ice machine up and trying to get off between US 27. So I don't even see enough land for an ice machine, properly landscaped, properly lit, for two trailers and a boat trying to fill up to go fishing and pull it with ice in there. That's what I see ice machine. I don't see John going to get ice for his personal use. I see people going fishing, people going on camping trips, and they got big old campers and they pull beside the ice machine and say, fill me up.
But didn't you say it's an acre of land?
This particular piece of property is actually a quarter of an acre.
Quarter of an acre. How much, how much land's a seven and a half?
They usually take a third and up. I'd say even more, half an acre and up.
Well, I'm going to tell you, I'm going to vote no, so, I mean, you can tell who are the former commissioners, that Commissioner John's going to vote no on it, so. You got, I got three other votes, but I'm probably voting no. Because I think the ugly land outside, especially on US 27, I think it's just a bad spot.
Well.
So that, that's just me, that's just my vote. So I'm, I'm the head of the gamble, no.
I would, and you know, I would support it, I guess if just staff would make best efforts to work with the owner and, you know, I don't know how beautiful you can make an ice machine, but it doesn't bother, it doesn't bother me. I mean, you know, there's one across from Publix and Villages there in Spar, there's one in that parking lot, that's the one I drive by all the time. It's just sitting there in the middle of an asphalt parking lot. I think we could do better than that.
We would basically make it a tiny development with landscaping, handicap parking, and monuments signs.
And when I say that, I say that cautiously, I don't want to.
A monument sign, too? It gave a monument sign?
It would need to serve as a, probably would need to take the business and make it work as a primary, as a primary.
I hate to micromanage the owner and overly complicated, but I mean, I'll just stand by that. Best efforts to make an ice machine look good. I don't think it's bad for Leesburg in that location. It's going to look better than the MMD.
Exactly.
I'm okay with it.
I will let them know.
So tell you got three.
I mean.
Where are you at?
Jay can leave smile when you ask that question.
That particular lot, the fact that they do have wide enough driveways and whatnot to get in off of 27, it would not be stopping any traffic or being a hazard. So that particular spot, I don't have a problem with. Want to put it on Main Street? Yeah, I have a problem with Main Street.
And obviously, you're okay with it, Dan? Well, I didn't mean, I didn't mean to word it quite like that. I meant, I respect Dan's opinion.
I think the best, the best, the best consent that the commission gave us is if that petitioner contacts Dan, staff will use our best efforts to put this in the, in the shape that it needs to be to go before the planning and zoning commission and the city commission.
I'll word my questions better in the future, Dan.
So I think that Commissioner Dennison should get with this former commissioner and tell him that welcome to the hot seat, because they got a couple of yeses, a couple of no's, one up in the air, and a lot of stipulations.
Okay, the other issue, I heard during our last meeting that ski beach after rain, we've got some flooding back in there, that the drainage isn't working as well as it should. Unfortunately, over the last two weeks, we haven't had any heavy rain, so I haven't been able to observe this myself. Just, you know, keep that.
Yeah, that's a new one to me, I'll get with DC on it.
Yeah, one of the holes in the parking lot or something.
You're looking like you want to say something. Did you?
Our project actually created some holding areas.
Exactly.
In that area, so it's actually working perfectly. It's going to be softer, as areas that were created as retention areas.
Okay. As long as it doesn't sit there and stop cars from parking and.
Yeah. We, we did have, I mean, we had an issue during one of the fishing tournaments where it rained the day before.
Right.
We had to move folks around. We've had a couple of cases where folks have got out there and, after it's rained and done dumb nuts and that kind of stuff.
Ouch.
Kind of having fun. But we try, if there's an event and there's, we try to keep people from going where it's wet.
Going into that, okay.
If we, if we know they're going out there. There are paved parking spots that they can park on as well.
Okay, I was just an alert for, for you, okay? And the final thing was, I got a call from an individual who has worked with Rogers Park and whatnot, and I understand that somebody is starting a GoFundMe account to get a wheelchair swing. I just want to make sure that this person is concerned that he will then start other fundraising and whatnot, that the city does not fall into being supportive of that, that, you know, bring the money, fine, but we will, we will do what we do.
Yeah.
I'm trying to say this so that.
I appreciate you saying that, because with these type of, and this, and, so I'm the one who responded to this, this, this issue came straight to me. We had Mr. Stapleton called me directly with this, want to put a wheelchair, handicap wheelchair swing in Rogers Park. So that, that always puts me in a difficult spot. The first, the first thing here is, I think our Parks and Rec Committee or the recreation, it wasn't, I think we put together a special Rogers Park Committee that reviewed all this stuff back when we did Phase 1 of Venetian Gardens. And we thought we did a very good job of taking handicap concerns into consideration. If you recall, all the, all the different conversations we had, we put in the specialized mat, we paid more for that. The mulch was a handicap rated material. We had, we took in a type of play equipment that was rated for handicaps, so, you know, a height level that you could get handicapped kids onto the play equipment. And then there were a couple pieces of equipment that while you couldn't get a wheelchair on there, you could get a handicapped child on there, like, like the disc swing.
Right.
And, and I think also that the committee took into account that we didn't want to segregate regular play equipment with handicap equipment. We, we wanted to keep it all inclusive. And, and when we went down the wheelchair ramps, I think we see communities where there starts to become a segregation of handicap equipment from typical equipment, and we didn't want to create that. So when Mr. Stapleton called me, my initial reaction was, oh, man, how do you tell somebody no? And I thought there would be more negative press for the city if I just said, ah, Mr. Stapleton, don't worry about it, don't do this. And then, then the Facebook pages would be, the city wasn't receptive to us and we weren't even going to pay for it. So I said, okay, so I felt like it was a good concept. Okay, if you're raising the money to do this, we'll back it up with putting it into place, maintaining it, and building a sidewalk. And, and so we kind of struck that handshake agreement. I thought that amount that we would be spending on, on a sidewalk was within my spending authority, so I didn't make an issue of it. I think we've received some positive press, I think, about it. Mr. Stapleton's done some Facebook stuff, and it seems like we're, you know, there, there's a joint community effort to get this done. Mr. Stapleton said it's been going so well that maybe there'll be more stuff, but I, but I do think there'll come a time where we say, look, this gets it.
Right.
You know, if there's one more swing, maybe it's something that goes over in Fountain Lake, or, or Veterans Park.
Right.
But, but yeah, I appreciate you saying that, appreciate you giving me that heads up and, but that, that's kind of how that whole thing unfolded.
The good thing about this, though, as you said, our, our commentary reporter was already to jump on Leesburg, that we don't do anything for handicapped students or, you know, and then found out that yes, indeed, we do, that Rogers Park was designed to help with the kids and stuff, and it, and, and end of story.
I did leave that part of my report out, but I did spend about a half an hour with that commentary reporter.
Didn't come out and write a nice article about everything we're doing, but at least this time it wasn't negative, which is different.
But how much money are we looking at for a handicap swing?
The handicap swing that they're fundraising on is about 15 to 20 grand. And, and on one, and the one that he.
Three thousand.
The, the swing itself is about 15 to 20 grand, and that's about a typical price. I've seen it. We've seen the specs, we've reviewed the specs, Travis and I, and I think it's a good quality swing. We had, I've, I've seen these in other communities, and I've purchased some places myself, so the swing that we're getting is of quality. Our expenditure to, to get it all hooked up, you know, we're maybe looking at three, five grand tops to extend some sidewalks. So I, I think it's a reasonable, good partnership. I do think there's probably a limit to it.
Yes.
But, but I think it goes hand in hand with what we're trying to do there at Rogers Park. It's affordable. I think it's a good gesture. And it was, I think it was a tricky situation just to handle, but you guys pay me to do that, and I think it was, I think it was handled appropriately.
Okay. That's it, thank you.
Commissioner Hurley had something else?
When it comes back, I'll, it's on, it's on the loop right now. When it comes back to me, I'll, I'll tell you.
Well, I don't have much tonight, I just want to invite everyone out, thank those who came to the Leesburg Black Heritage Gala. I was like, a 19th year doing it, it was a great event. We honored some, some pioneers from Leesburg that have gone on, leave the Lord, but I think the community was very receptive of some of the attributes they've done to make Leesburg better. And on Saturday, we do have the Heritage Festival on Pine Street and the parade, and then on Sunday, there's a gospel concert. So everyone's invited to come out and celebrate with us.
Commissioner Hurley, remember.
It, it came back to Don. So it's an event, and this weekend, and there's a lot of people from Beverly Shores. Don's luck.
Yeah.
That park there, Santa Henderson Park, or however you named it? What would it, you know, that seawall is all crumbled and busted up and, and messed up. Would it be a big deal if we just took the seawall out and just let it be a natural waterfront, like the lakes and stuff?
You know, let me, before answering that, let me, and I know Mr. Luckich has been after me about making it a dog park and these type of things, and the commission really hasn't, excuse me, the commission hasn't really authorized that to get turned into a dog park, and I don't know if we've had the public discussion. Mr. Luckich has been on me two or three different times about it. Let me give you a report to the commission on this park with an up, let me get with DC and give you an update. We've had, and just because I, my, I'm not tapped into what we did, but I do know, we had several discussions on this park, we had the community come out to the park, and then Mr. Luckich, I don't think represents what the entire Beverly Shores community directed us to do, and we came up with a capital improvement plan based on that public feedback. So let me get that report back to you, let me dig that report up, what we decided to do, and where we're at, what we've done, what we haven't done. And, and if I recall, it was about 120 grand, and it was signage, it was some swing sets, it was some different stuff, I think maybe some sidewalks in there. I don't know where we're at. I remember there was a lot of discussion about what we do with the ramp. I don't remember where that went, but it was 120 grand and these were the, these were the priorities. So let me get you that report back. I will get that back, I will send that to you email.
Did we ever discuss reopening the ramp?
I think we, we talked at an agnozium.
It's a thing I had 30 minutes ago, man.
Agnozium, and I think we ultimately decided not to do it.
He's a junkie.
So, I appreciate that.
Last thing.
You know, sometimes that can be really funny, too, and sometimes it's so darn serious. I don't.
That seawall needs to be addressed whether we pull it out. I was just thinking it'd be cheaper to pull it out.
There was something we did talk about in the seawall, and that's why I wanted to